Council member. Council member. Council member.
I'm here.
Council member. Buckingham.
Here.
Council member. Garcia.
Here.
Council member.
Yeah.
Mayor. Knapper. Council member. Maddox. Council member. A.
Sure.
Deputy mayor. We have.
Can I have a motion to excuse council member? Maddox.
Motion to excuse council member? Seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Motion to excuse Mayor Knapper.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Awesome. Great. Number four.
Presentation by Ryan Owens of Enterprise Fleet Management Services.
Great. Well, um, thank you, counsel for having me very much appreciate it. So just wanted to touch on a few points of uh what the partnership would look like between enterprise and the city. Um, just want to give you just a real quick background on the company and myself. And then what it is that we do for cities and how we add value and what the savings is so. Just for those of you that don't know, again, my name's Ryan Owens. I'm with Enterprise Fleet Management. Enterprise Fleet Management is a subsidiary, a company of enterprise rent of cars. Most people know it. So we were founded in St. Louis nineteen fifty seven by Jack Taylor. He actually got the name. He flew fire jets off the USS Enterprise, which is where the name came from back in fifty seven. Started with just a few vehicles out of the Lindbergh Cadillac dealership here locally. And um, we've grown our business to, we now manage just under three million vehicles in eighty seven countries. And so we're still owned by the by the Taylor family, which is pretty wild. We're actually one of the largest privately held companies in the world. Um, so we operate globally and our headquarters are actually here in St. Louis and Clayton. Um, myself, I've been with the company for twelve years. Uh, started in in the rental divisions, right? Washing cars, suit and tie deal. And um, you know, I had the opportunity now to lead our our fleet management business for Missouri and for Illinois. So. Um, most of what I focus on and what we focus on as a company recently has just been our government sector, government business. Our our model really just fits the best for that. So if you look at this first page here, this is everything that we do um for cities, counties, departments, companies, et cetera. We look at total vehicle management. So how do you fund the vehicle? How do you acquire it? How do you operate it? How and when do you sell it? And what data points do you pull from it from a technology standpoint? So at the end of the day. Partners, what they see with us, our clients, is they see a much newer fleet and they see cost savings. And they see us managing about ninety percent of the day to day stuff on their behalf. So. Um, one of the big questions folks have is how does our funding work? So we actually act as the bank. Um, so most of our clients, if if not, you know, ninety nine percent of them are using what's called an equity lease. And so how an equity lease works is it's very, very similar to a finance. It's vastly different from a consumer network. So the city would ultimately be making finance payments on the vehicle. We'll just, we hold the title for a few different reasons. Our investors require us to, and it makes it easier for us to manage the vehicle itself, licensing, entitling, and selling, et cetera. But the city will, you guys can drive it as many or as few miles as you want. There's no wear and tear fees. You can keep it for one year and keep it for ten years. Completely up to you. And whenever we sell the asset, all of that resale dollar just flows back to the city. Um, if we scroll to the next page, I'll I'll give you. So this is where the city's fleet is as of today. We work with anything from a small sedan all the way up to say like an F six fifty. And we handle all of the upfitting of equipment as well, including police vehicles. So all the police outfit, dump bodies, snowplows, spreaders, all that stuff. So right now, uh, our niche of vehicles for the city, you got about thirty vehicles that we would work with. Um, the average age of those is eight to nine years old. Based on your acquisition trends or how many vehicles you're buying a year, right now, you're on about a ten year cycle, which is pretty standard from what we see with cities. Most cities would like to be on a shorter cycle and have newer vehicles, but they can't do it because of funding restrictions. So that's one reason why a lot of entities will use our equity lease is if you're going to pay cash for, you know, say one cruiser, right? That's going to cost you seventy grand, right? Probably in cash in that budget here. Well, if you put it through the equity lease, which is what we do, you could replace seven cruisers because you're just making a payment instead of putting all that cash up front. So what we do is we help entities cycle through their vehicles at a more rapid pace. We buy them strategically. We'll go straight to the manufacturer, right? We'll go straight to Ford or straight to Chevy or whoever it is, whoever the city wants to use. And we'll acquire that vehicle at what's called invoice pricing on your demand. So the manufacturers, they'll build a vehicle, they'll price it at invoice, they'll give it to a dealer. The dealer will mark it up to MSRP and then they'll sell it from there. Most dealers are not giving government discounts anymore because they're just, they're just too profitable right now. Um, they're selling them at retail MSRP rates. We just essentially cut the middleman out. We go straight to the manufacturer for you. So we'll acquire the vehicle at factory invoice pricing, which is can be anywhere from three to five thousand dollars cheaper on the vehicle price uh just upfront. So that's one of the ways that we drive savings. We'll handle ordering, when to order it, how to order it. We'll handle all the outfit and then we can put different items in place to help control your maintenance and your fuel expenses. But then really strategically, we'll identify what's the the most effective life cycle. So we hold this for one year, should it be held for five years or even longer? So once we identify that, then we'll take the vehicle for you. We'll sell it on the city's behalf and all of that money will flow back into the city. So what you'll see is by executing from a ten year cycle down to a five cycle, if you scroll down to the very bottom notes. We put a plan in place, a ten year model. Just keep going all the way down. Yep.
Go down to here.
Yep. So if you look at the bottom right figure, the ten year savings through the execution of a strategic plan would be two hundred thirty thousand dollars in savings to the city as composed, as opposed to what you're actually spending today. Um, not only would we have the two hundred thirty thousand in savings for the city, but we would also be taking the average age or the cycle point of vehicles from ten years down to five years. And then we'll manage nine, like I said, ninety percent of that process on the city's behalf. So happy to answer whatever questions you guys have. Yeah. So there's a couple of different ways. So when you, there's two pieces. When you, when you run a fleet and you hold a vehicle, every single year that you hold that vehicle, vehicles see what's called engine degradation. So their fuel economy actually degrades as it gets older. So that's the first piece is that we're cutting that fuel degradation out by not holding vehicles for ten years. But the second piece is as you're constantly bringing new vehicles in with better engine technology, those vehicles are just naturally more efficient than they were if you're going to hold a vehicle for a long time. So if you're running vehicles every five years or every ten years, you're buying newer vehicles, right? And so your fuel economy improves because the engine technology gets better. And then what you'll obviously see with maintenance is instead of having a ten year old vehicle that has high maintenance expenses. If you're running vehicles every four or five years, a lot of that stuff is actually still under warranty, right? So your maintenance expenses, what our clients see on average is about eighty percent reduction in maintenance expense. That's just simply by having new vehicles.
Are there any um, like liability or insurance cost differences for fleet versus own? Do we know?
You guys, so typically your insurance will stay the exact same. Like we don't, we don't see any changes in insurance or providers whenever we 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 assist.
Well, of course, it's like, perspective is very important. Um, one thing we're finding right now, like you've already talked about, first of all, getting a vehicle is really very tough. We're also paying legal costs. The idea to get the old big vehicles to stay restored while it was effectively thrived up. Uh, not your, not your stand. My initial, initially had skepticism when I heard these, that actually it's an equity lease, the non traditional lease. So we're actually still building equity. Um, we reached out, I don't know how many of the public have reached out, but I've reached out to about seven different municipalities. Everyone was very happy with it. I know, uh, I think it was Jeffrey City, Missouri, for example, they had trucks that were supposed to be on a five year cycle. And with the cost of um used vehicles, particularly trucks, they go for a year. Enterprise contacted them and said, we can get you brand new trucks right now if you want to sell these back to us right now. And they actually pocketed money. I don't believe that's going to continue. I'm I'm wondering, no question, that would be a unusual situation. But the upfitting is a big one from the public works trucks too. We're Napa Hyde, where we do most of our upfitting from our chassis to our dump trucks. You go to the line right now based on how many vehicles you um are your last purchase. And we we purchase vehicles frequently enough that we're all at the end of the line. And so by partnering with enterprise, we'll go to the front of the line. Um, and so save a little bit at the front end. Um, save some on maintenance and save some on the trade value as well. Um, I believe the police will benefit from the trade value as well. I know we do, because we always drive something honestly till it dies. Usually once the maintenance cost gets so high, that's usually our, our, to get something.
Yeah, we're getting to the point where almost going to play an emergency. We'll have to buy directly from the dealership once available right now. Um, and that's going to be a big challenge. I've seen municipality shipping for that. If there's a vehicle on the lot right now, we uh, rate it, we set it to government, make an emergency purchase, which you're paying the best possible price.
Yeah.
You cooperate with it. Enterprise, they have a much better opportunity. The main thing I like about this, besides a three to five thousand dollar savings possibly per vehicle. It's about a ninety percent of local resources pulled by enterprise. One of my staff right now is assigning the fleet vehicles. I can actually say about fifty percent of the week that's on the fleet vehicles. And then they're out. So that's a huge savings in that aspect too. I can get that fixed services back on another area.
That's a great point. That was so we recently brought on Franklin County, uh, their entire county, uh, both their police and the public work side. And so they had, to chief's point, they had one of their detectives um essentially had to be assigned to running their fleet. And you know, their sheriff said, you know, hey, Ryan, you know, we we love the savings. We love everything you can do, but it's it's also huge for us to be able to have our detective out solving crimes as opposed to being a mechanic and a fleet manager, right? So it allows our entities and our partners to focus on their core business and we focus on ours. Yeah. So the maintenance, there's a lot of different options. So the first piece is if your fleet is half the age already naturally, you're going to reduce your maintenance expense significantly. Um, you can keep the maintenance in house and shops. If you have shops on site, you can do that with your own mechanic or you can take the vehicle to any one of the local shops. Um, and have it maintained or have the maintenance done there. We can, we have the ability to lock in the maintenance expense on certain vehicles. Um, so that you would take it to the shop, the shop would essentially bill enterprise for whatever the repair was. And you guys would only pay that fixed amount per vehicle per month um from a maintenance standpoint. The other option is we have what's called maintenance management where you would still use the local shops. And we would just have oversight to those vehicles. Um, and we would come, they would bill enterprise. We would give you guys a bill at the end of the month to show you exactly what you spent. We pass through our shop rates, our volume rates as well, so.
Can you help me understand uh when we get into year twenty twenty nine, thirty, thirty one, twenty two? I'm looking at the budget and it looks like it's a, in some cases, better. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in, you know, one or four hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty three.
So.
Savings or how how that, how that works?
Yeah. So to to go through this on a high level, so the gold line, that's what your, that's what the city's average year looks like on a spend, you know, skewing back fifteen years. So in an average year on buying vehicles and operating vehicles, city spends about two hundred and seventeen thousand. That's what the fleet budget category is about two hundred and seventeen thousand. And so then you'll see in the first year, we could, if you, if we brought on, if we replaced ten vehicles for the city in the first year, those ten vehicles we would sell for the city, which would bring back roughly sixty nine thousand dollars in resale. But to lease all ten of those vehicles, it would cost ninety three thousand dollars. That would improve your maintenance from forty down to thirty four, your fuel from fifty seven to fifty one. So your actual net spend, and that's with replacing ten vehicles, would be a hundred and ten thousand, which is a hundred and seven thousand dollars in savings off your normal year. And so what we do is we just keep chipping away, replacing vehicles until the entire fleet is rotating through that strategic cycle. And five years is the average. Some might be three years, some could be seven or eight, really just depends. But five years is the average. And so what you'll see is that, yes, you you may have a certain year, like in year thirty one, where you spend three oh six as opposed to two seventeen. But if you look at, that's a siloed look, obviously. If you look at the big picture over all the ten years, you will see that savings of about a quarter million. Hopefully that answers your question.
No, in a roundabout way, still like, can you give me an idea of like this why those two years?
Because the lease prices are the same, though, with eight years. And then it gets kind of rocky.
So. Even mouse. Or you can go ahead. All good, all good.
What I understand.
Yeah, sure.
If I may, basically what it is, it's just in the, that's just the projection that he has for the cars that we're selling and then the cars that that we're buying cars that are stolen. If we actually did it on even every five years, you wouldn't have one year that's at three hundred and five. Because if you look at year thirty three, we're only spending a hundred and fifty seven or a hundred and sixty seven, I'm sorry. So it's just because there's more years being bought that year, cars being bought that year and less cars being sold. So if we did like five year, five cars every year, five cars bought, five cars sold every year, you wouldn't have this big thing. It weren't even that. It's just the model that he used on this, based on the cars and what they think the best value for resale would be, would be, you would have one year would be a hundred and six, but then two years later, it's a hundred and fifty seven. So it averages out. It's just. When you're spending cars and not selling them.
Yeah, it really just depends how we chop it up. This would be the most cost effective way is there are these ten vehicles we identified are pretty high risk. They're old, they have high mileage and it's time to get rid of them. So that we would say, hey, replace ten and then six and then eight and then all until these different numbers until we get to the total twenty nine vehicles cycling. That's just one way to do it. We could also attack it to Lex's point of saying it's just do five, 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 you know, or wherever that looks.
No, I mean, I I, yeah, I I I trust uh our city manager and our public works that that is going to do best. I just wanted to, I saw the big number and I'm like, let me answer.
Yeah, sure.
I did too. So I had to look at it, figure it out. I'm with you.
Appreciate the question.
What does an agreement look like when cities enter into fleet management with enterprises? Is it a certain number of years or how, like, what does that normally consist of?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah. So we have, it's called a master lease agreement. So that's the first piece. And ultimately what that says is just here's how our leases work, right? There's no length of commitment. There's no really commitment at at any point. Um, so you would sign a master lease agreement and that would allow your officers essentially to execute leases at their will. So the master lease says, here's how the leases work. And then from there, every lease that you sign, um, that is your vehicle, right? That we have for you. At any point, if you sign, if we sign a five year lease on a vehicle, right? At any point you, we could say, you know, hey, let's sell this at year two, we give you your money that on the resale and then we could part ways. There's nothing that says you have to continue to acquire vehicles through us. Our relationship only lasts as long as you're acquiring vehicles through us. If you stopped acquiring vehicles through us, then you wouldn't have any business. So um, there's an, like I said, there's a master lease agreement. And then after that, it's just individual lease schedules. One thing that folks like is that we're, we are a member of Sourcewell and and the state contracts. We've already been bidding and vetted out, so you don't have to actually take every single individual vehicle out to bid. We're already vetted through that pricing consortium, Sourcewell. Yeah.
We used to have access, like we have a membership to Sourcewell, if I can go in and see what's available. And everything used to be available. And like now, there's just, you know, like, and it would be enforced that the city made with the purge and enterprise, when they go and they're sort of that contract, for the most part, everything is prepared. And we used to pay anywhere from a couple hundred dollars to maybe twelve hundred dollars.
Another one of the biggest changes we've seen recently is how the market works. So prior to COVID, you could go and pick up pretty much any vehicle off the lot at a reasonable price. You could order vehicles from the manufacturer, they would build them, deliver them to you. That world has just completely gone away. Quite frankly, as far as we can see, it's not coming back. Um, so the world that we live in now, for example, is so last year Chevy GM opened up the Tahoe order banks. Um, and in years prior, they would open up, they'd say, hey, we're going to open up the Tahoe. You have a year to place your orders and they close their window for a few weeks and they open up the next year. Really simple, right? Now, this last year, we got a call from our GM rep. We're actually the largest buyer and seller of cars in the world. So we're, we're the biggest customer to the manufacturers, so we sit closely to them. So our GM rep called me, Casey, this last year and said, hey, Ryan, just FYI, we're going to open up the Tahoe um in three weeks, so let your clients know. And I said, okay, great. Said, well, how long do you think it's going to be open for? And he, he actually responded with about a day. And I thought he was kidding. Like I actually laughed. I was like, yeah, funny. He goes, no, I'm serious. And sure, sure enough, they they opened the window and closed it twenty four hours later. So as soon as I found that information out, we sent an email out to all of our clients and said, hey, if y'all are in need of Tahoe, then let us know. We'll get your name into the order bank system, have them built and delivered for you. If you didn't, GM doesn't just publish this information publicly, right? They don't just say, hey, here's more opening, here's long. If if you didn't know that, um, then you were basically SOLO as a client. You would have to wait till the GM, till those vehicles hit a dealer's lot, which the dealers market them up ten grand at least. So just the ability that we can sit close to the manufacturers and know what's going to open, when it's going to open, how long, what the odds of production are. That ability to navigate the environment has been huge for for clients. Um, I've got a lot of clients on the police side who before they came to us, they ordered, you know, explorers or interceptors or whatever. And Ford took their orders, but they ended up canceling them. They said, hey, you know what? They told them seven months down the road, we're actually not going to be able to build them, but good luck. Which is, it's crazy to believe, but it it's happened time and time again. And so our ability to know and to give the proper information that, hey, we can place an order for Ford's, but they're probably not going to build them. We should probably look at a different manufacturer. Um, is, has been critical for the success of all the operations for our clients. So. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very nice of you. Thank you.
Good evening. I just, um, we, 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 I'm kind of regurgitating this list that we looked at maybe two, three weeks ago. But I'm kind of getting into the crunch time as far as trying to get the bids out. So I, I didn't make any changes to this list, but I um, I'm open to any suggestions or or any ideas. Um. I'm hoping to have the the bid formula, the bid package is ready. Um. And probably put him out for bid in January. Um, pre-bid meetings, pre-con, pre-bid meeting, pre-construction meetings uh as early as February, March, and and then going to the council, the very first meeting in April with my fingers crossed that after the bond issue, whether or not it passes or not, first meeting in April will be. So um, and I'm planning on breaking these down just to give a little, little background on that. I I plan on breaking them down in into two year processes and then also um, three separate projects. It's very conceivable, we could have the same contractor do do three million dollars a year, but not necessarily likely. And if I do limit it to those contractors that can handle that type of work, it could, it could result in in um bids that are nowhere near as uh competitive. So that, that's, that's the plan right now. Do three million in twenty four, three million in twenty five. And like I said, have them broken down into three. I will also have a break glass if needed uh bid where we would take care of the uh two of the worst blocks in town, which would be, um, I believe it's Elm and Ellis. But um, with what I'm proposing is just kind of a, a worst first approach based on our most recent street inventory. Uh, we talked briefly about the ADA access to the back of city hall. I think it's something that's sorely needed. That would also include, or we'd probably pay the hardware out of something different, but for the ramp system, which would be roughly a hundred thousand. Um, and then I think I put in solar streetlights as well, which is kind of a little bit unique, but it's also related to to streets. We would use that as infill uh lighting. And then we'd also do standalone sidewalk projects, which I do not have those locations yet, but we will get those, assuming that that amount is is approved. Does anyone have any questions with any of the um projects that are proposed or would like to see something, maybe money shifted one way or?
Uh, I I have a question, I think. Um, so with the traffic calming study and some of the things that we'll probably be looking at in that in the future, which probably isn't ready now, right? Um, are you prepared to have some, something withheld for some potential stuff with that? Is that going to be something that would be included in this or how would we?
I have traffic calming measures for five roads, Bellevue from Manchester to the city, uh, north to the city limits. Lindover Place, Big Bend to Bellevue. Uh. Flora, we would do basically the entire stretch of Flora. Uh, Le Cleed Station Road to Sutton Boulevard. And one thing that's important to note in that, the traffic study primarily focused on um Big Bend to Sutton. But the police department, their data also showed a lot of speeding all the way to Le Cleed. So we tried to incorporate all of Flora, Rannells Avenue, Le Cleed Station Road to Big Bend. And then Oxford, Big Bend to Kensington. So that that essentially gets you two blocks. You, so. Yes, Oxford, Big Bend to Kensington, but the roughly the first two blocks as you come off Big Bend heading east. And we're actually on the proposals also to reconstruct those. So that may be where we could look at maybe doing something a little more creative like chicanes or something of that nature. But when you have a pre-existing road like Bellevue, um, we talked initially about chicanes and there's so many parking problems right there. Where do you, where do, where do you bump out the roads, so to speak? Um, you'd have to have residents agree to that, but you could also do traffic humps, traffic ramps. Uh, we probably avoid speed bumps due to the speed there. So we don't have any, nothing, nothing's figured out, right? That's just kind of like a. Well, I have money actually allocated for those. I have um for those five areas. So I do plan on, in in the promotional or educational literature is what we have to deem it as, not promotional. Um, I I will actually have traffic calming measures. I don't have exactly what's on there, but it would probably just probably list a couple of options.
Yeah. I mean, I just know that, like, we had concerns with some of the stuff that was in our area, like the the proposal for. Yeah, I mean, I just know that, like, we had concerns with some of the stuff that was in our area, like the, the proposal for Ranalls specifically was ridiculous to. Squeeze that in to make it so tight that people couldn't drive out, right? So I, as long as we're, we're able to have that discussion about what traffic calming measures. We, we, we need to implement in what areas, right? And it's kind of vague, I guess, in that nature, then yeah, that's, that's great.
That'll slow traffic down. And if you get a question, which, which is very possible, you will particularly West Bruno. Um, because that was, that was a tier one street. That's one of the worst. Well, why is Wes Bruno not on here? It's because we, we have to. Coordinate and collaborate with, um, the cities of Richmond High or City of Richmond Heights. I've already been in contact with representatives. We're looking at, um, meeting over the next six or eight months. I talked about the need to bring residents into that, those discussions. And then the idea is in January of 25, so roughly a little over a year. Um, fill out a service transportation program grant, a joint grant, so we could get a lot of these. These, um, funds approved. You know, you're looking at possibly a roundabout at the Lindbergh. Uh, Brudell intersection. That's something that's been discussed in the past. Um. Potentially mini roundabouts, potentially some chicanes there. Um, if you remember, that was another recommendation to narrow the road. I can tell you this much. Matt just got an email not long ago, and I believe the mayor got that as well, where one guy said his. Car had been hit, his lost rearview mirrors maybe three or four times. So I don't want to narrow it. Sometimes. If, if you wanna slow speeds down, there's, there's also. Uh, ramifications for that. But, um, I think, like I said, Richmond Heights is interested. So I just want people to know that's the case. And we will have additional capital money aside from the 6 million available if some other things come up. So if the traffic measure, calming measures are a little more expensive, chicanes versus speed humps or ramps, we will have some money available for that. We're trying to obviously. Replenish the fund balance, which is Lexi's shaking her head. Yes, that's something we'll need to do as well. But, um. Wait and figure it out. Yeah. It's, it's possible. It goes three and a half, two and a half, or something of that nature. Yes. What I'm looking for is, um, to start putting bid documents together to figure out the best way to split this up. We also like to try to. Um, it's painful when you have to go through a construction process where you can just ask anyone that lives near Marshall and Rule and Moller. Uh, right now, we try to break those up. And not just by Ward, but by just different areas of town. So you're not constantly. Feel like you're driving through construction and, and, and doesn't feel like everything is torn up at once.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I really appreciated the solar lights just because. I was gonna say the optics, which I guess is true in more than one. I know, right? It's a, it's a reasonably fast thing, you know, people, it's, I, I don't know how long they take to install, but I can guarantee it's not as long as major roadwork.
Well, what's very nice is I've, uh, spoke with Brentwood's public works director and they've already gone through, um, three different types. And, and it turns out the more expensive or, or maybe the middle version as far as cost. Uh, is much easier to install and they can be done in-house. So, so they've already offered to help us get the first. One or two up and assured us that our crews can do the installation, which basically means we're, we're getting, you know, two for everyone. If we had to contract this out. And so, um. It's kind of nice that they, they learn, learn the lessons and they're very gracious that they're gonna help us with that.
It's nice of them to beta test it.
Yes, exactly. Um, at this point, does everything look okay? Okay, excellent.
Yeah, can I, um, then this may be a hair off topic, maybe even a little, a little adjacent, but. Um, you know, we do these things where we repair these streets and then, um, MSD or, uh, water company decides to come in. But my, my perspective on it is, is I understand utilities need to be gone and you can't always anticipate the utility work, right? I know you guys do try to get that stuff organized. What type of oversight, uh, can we provide that, you know, when they go and tear it up and they just go. Toss their asphalt down, drive over with a dump truck and leave, and we end up with the $6 million worth of half. Beat up roads. What's our, what, what, how are we prepared to protect this 6 million?
Our control are excavation permits and withholding permits for, for utilities. Um. I'll, I'll use Missouri American for an example. They used to do a lot of stuff in-house and it was a lot better. They tore up. Marshall before, about seven years ago, they tore up Le Cleed Station Road. We had some other problems where they were doing some poor excavations. We tried to work with them and I finally just said, we're not issuing any more permits for any reason unless it's an emergency repair. You, you would have thought I, you know, I, it was like an act of Congress, like how could you possibly do this? You don't have, so we absolutely do have the authority because. We have, anytime you tear a road up, you have to get an excavation permit. So we just said, we're not doing one until you fix. All these other areas. The area in particular was Yale Avenue. It's instead of a water line, they went across the road. So that one actually caused about an, uh, seven or eight month. Process where we didn't issue anything. They, they called to tattle on me, just so happened Marty was retired. Okay, so I've told you that story. So what's, what we can do is we can continue to monitor that. We actually do pay for our own inspectors to monitor that work. I just had a house on, um, Ranalls that put in a, a curb and a saw cut. Uh, instead of taking the entire slab out, we're not gonna issue the occupancy permit for the house until they fix that road. So really what it is, is. The hook is to monitor it, to try to catch it upfront, so they do it right. But if they don't. We, we hold them accountable by not allowing them to go further. Um, Missouri American is just. They've had some retirements and their, their current staff. Has been, been working very well with the city. I just want to point that out. And Zephyr is a, is an excellent example. You know how we had. We had, they were, the settling issue, but we were waiting on, um. Zephyr would have been done last summer, but we were waiting on them to go do their, their water main replacement first. So those residents are done with it, but at least all the utilities are done. Now that street's covered up. Hopefully we don't have it torn up. Afterwards. But one of the first things I'll do is notify all of the companies. Probably later this week and give them these roads right now. And we have. Pre-construction meetings with them that we didn't used to have in the past. They've been very receptive. Missouri American Waters right now, the. The biggest, um, problem as far as they have over 200 open excavation permits right now in Maplewood.
I, I recognize that this is a problem everywhere. Like you drive around, it's every, I know it's not just us. I will just say this, I think you'd have some supporters on this body if you're laying awake one night and come up with some genius. Way to get on the front end. I, I appreciate what you were saying, like we can watch them and if they F it up, we can punish them by not, but that's, you know, reactive instead of proactive. So. I have my thinking cap on. If we think of a way that we can stop it in the first place, I'm.
Well, what we do is they have long-term plans. They do have long-term. And so what they used to do is those plans would just from next year or two years from now to where something else would happen. And then they would just take them off the list. They would drop. Maple, just east of Sutton's a good example. Zephyr is another example. And we've gone back to them and said, it will cost you this much money if you fix the, the main, which. Might not be a 10 out of 10 on your scale, but it's an eight out of 10 or a seven out of 10. Or it's gonna cost you X dollars later after we put in a brand new concrete street to do it right. And that, that's, that's what we've been trying to work with them on.
Do we, we have, do we have language that, that's, when somebody tears something up, that it has to be put back?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that language.
It's very detailed language, joint to joint.
I, I, I know you've talked about before, I believe, I just, it's one of those things that if I didn't say something, I would, I could get yelled at or.
No, it's a, so we did the citizens academy. Anyone that's gone through it, I probably spend. I don't know, out of two hours, I probably spend 40 minutes talking about, about utilities. It's a real problem, especially when you spend so much money on roads and then they come in. And tear it up. And it may not be noticeable immediately, but within so many years, the small amount on Zephyr was. Those, those two blocks, $561,000. It's a lot of money just for two blocks. We actually withheld, we didn't, we didn't do final approval on that MSD project for five years. Because once we accept it, you have a year window where after 365 days, you're responsible for the repairs. Was everyone okay with, uh, the webpage? Just if anyone sees anything they'd wanna see added to it. I, I just figured put the handout instead of regurgitating everything. The frequently asked questions, uh. Comment by Councilmember Garcia. We, we took that on there. It was a good idea. Anything else? Let me know. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Um, so this is something that I was looking at from a couple of different angles, um, and I, and I see a need for, uh, some changes. Uh, and I would really like to get some input, um, from you guys as far as what you guys think, um, would help. Not be such a restrictive ordinance as far as, uh, the number of pets that we can have. Um, as well as, um, the pet licensing, um, that we're doing. So I'll give you, I'll give you a handful of information here and then, uh, see what you guys think about it and, and kind of discuss and see what things sound like. Um, currently on our five-two budget session, um, the revenue was, uh. Estimated or it was received, it was $2,500 for the, the pet tags. So just some quick, quick basic math. Um, that gives me 500 tags at five bucks. It's a $5 fee. Um, so yes, we're putting 10 minutes of staff per tag, uh, to issue those and deal with those. It's 83 hours. Uh, total, it comes out to $2,083. I don't know what the cost of the tag was specifically, uh, but estimating 50 cents for one of those tags for us to buy those, uh, that's 250 bucks. Uh, so that's putting us at $2,333 for these pet tags. Um. So we're technically losing around $200, I think, if this, if these numbers are all correct, based on what it was at the budget, um, and just some, like I said, some cocktail math. Um, the reason I'm bringing this up is. It's, it's not utilized by very many people. Most of the people I talk to go, yeah, I've heard of it, uh, but I don't have that. Um, and so. That's what everyone says. I've done it the first time. So the US average, uh, is one pet per 2.4 people. Uh, so with 8,000 residents, that should say we should have about 3,300 pets in Maplewood. Uh, at 500, we're looking at a sixth of the people that are actually utilizing this from us. Um, it's also a redundancy, so. Um, we, we're doing this, right? So we can make sure that people are having rabies shots and we're, we're checking that our, our pets are inoculated, right? So St. Louis County already monitors this. St. Louis County already issues a tag for this. Um, so in my opinion. Having that whole thing in there is a waste of staff time. We're not really generating any revenue. Um. It, it's something that I can see going away and not being a big problem. Um, the other side of this that I talked to you guys about or that I sent was the, the number of animals. Right now, as it reads now, you can have two dogs. Or two cats. Um, I know several, several people who are non-compliant. Um, I may actually classify some of my animals as. I don't know how that works on the accuracy, but I'm telling. Um, but so I, I think if we could figure out, um, just a way to make this less restrictive, a little bit more of a common sense number for people. Um, I, I think it would make sense, looking at, um, Brentwood, for example, Brentwood reads, um. And I'll, I'll just cut it down to. Oh, manager possess, his or her premises more than three dogs or combined. Six dogs and cats, as long as there's no more than three dogs. Right? So when I, those were somewhere around the same thing, anything over five would qualify for our kennel license, which, which we have, and that has the restrictions for somebody getting out of. Um, so that's just an example of what Brentwood has. Um, other, a, a lot of other areas don't even have restrictions as far as how many you can and cannot have. There are a couple of counties around us that have similar to what we do. Um. I have, um. Three dogs and a cat. My house is pretty normal. Um, so it, it's my opinion that you could have. Three dogs, two cats, be pretty normal, not be out of hand, not be crazy. Curious to see what you guys think and hopefully we can come down to. Some sort of a reasonable number and modify this to help out our people.
Did you look up, what are the county rules?
Like, no, I don't, the only thing I looked up on the county, which was the basis of some of this stuff was the rabies inoculation. So they have that same thing. Um, but I don't know if the county has a specific number that they require.
Mr. Traxler, do you happen to know, and I'm sorry to kind of put you on the spot. Yes. Okay, no problem.
They used to do. Two or two, because when you read that language. I, I think it could be read two ways. We now allow, we can have two dogs and two cats. Just, why, if you're thinking about it a minute. And you're right, we don't make a penny off this. And it's, it's a lot of. It's, it's a lot of time and.
I, I averaged it at about 83 hours and that's just me ballpark and saying 10 minutes per tag and what we have. So it was 83 hours of staff time. That, that we're spending, and that's just me, not, not actual staff information, but.
I think if we thought the tags had some value, I would be like, fine, we can lose money on it because they have value, but I don't see a value, uh, if the county is already doing that. In terms of the numbers, I, I, yeah, I'm online. I think six is reasonable, you know, combined. Yeah, density is not the cities though, so.
I, I like it. I, I, it makes sense to me. Um, and I agree with your changes. The only collection I have is designing this language. If there is like a dog in town that attacked a child, when I know we're bound. Is there anything in here that we need to have that's not already covered by the county having a rabies inoculation? Or having language elsewhere in our ordinances? Yep, I'm good then. Thank you. That might be worth a look though, to make sure there's nothing in those rules that, that there's not, isn't that I found. I look at everything, everything. Um, and that's, and that's all covered. Um, there is also a separate rabies ordinance that in our ordinances as well, that covers that side of it. Um, as well as, like you said, the vicious dogs, as well as dogs on the loose, as well as if your dog gets captured by the, the city and they have to hold your dog. And, and so on and so forth. So all of those things would still remain.
Once we're bringing this forward, because I've heard from a lot of our community members about how restrictive this ordinance is. And then you're right, a lot of folks are not coming up to City Hall to get the tags that they're supposed to get. So like, and we're not enforcing it consistently, if at all. So. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for not citing me for myself incriminating, uh, here on Medias. So i- is everybody okay with the, the way that, that I made that proposal? Is anybody wanna see anything changed as far as those numbers? Like I said, I, I threw that together based on what I was thinking, but I, obviously. Getting more input and getting more ideas is gonna be a lot better than.
Yeah, I, I think this is changing with the times, right? Like back when this was written, everybody had big horrifying. Dogs that would be called hounds. Now everybody has little cute dogs and they put in their purse. I don't think three of those is gonna, right? Like, I think people are, it'll self-regulate. So I think as long as the number's not something crazy, it's fine. Four, five, six.
So would this be like something similar to Brentwood, where we say no more than, uh, no more than three? Are we looking at a combined, I mean, that's kind of what I was looking at because if you. Cats, right? And so, uh, it was for me, it was a combined total of, uh, five, you would be okay. Anything within five, you would then fall into our kennel category.
I like it.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, except for, yeah, the kennel, by the way, I'm glad you mentioned it. I think there was a kennel fee, right? So there's a hundred dollar a year kennel fee that has its own set of restrictions based on, uh, it's, I believe that's some planning and zoning stuff that falls into some of that category with the kennel stuff as far as restrictions. And strange is many requirements for inoculating, you know, so stay in place. Just not issuing our Maplewood tag for that. Is there, is that going to mess up something with a duck? No. Okay. Yeah. We still, everyone is still required to have their animals inoculated per St. Louis County ordinance and our municipal ordinance as well.
We're good. Yep. All right. If there's nothing further, then we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. And you oppose, that motion carries. We are adjourned.